Change in the public comments will be taken and no actions anticipated. Nice agenda was amended to Adam D. One, which is executive session. Any items food for action by accounts tonight will be placed on the March nineteenth, twenty twenty five city meeting agenda. Whereas otherwise determined, find an ongoing reminder that questions or comments by the public may be submitted on any item. At any time, I emailed city dot council at C I dot Bremerton dot W A dot U S. I need to get the new address in there. And Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. First item up tonight on on the agenda, item A one. Which is the confirmed reappointment of Vanessa Asserito to the B C A citizens advisory committee here to present tonight is our B C A director Colleen Miko. Go ahead, please.
Hello. So this is for a reappointment of Vanessa Sherco. This is a one year term. And it is for the position of City of Bremerton staff member on the B C A advisory committee.
Great questions in the council. Go ahead.
Are they always one year terms?
No, but no, they're not. Some of the other positions are two year terms. I'm not sure why the staff. Position is a similar year.
Okay, all right. That's my only question. Thank you.
Denise?
I just wanted to mention that I had the good fortune of working with Vanessa while she served as support for the Public Safety Committee. And I knew of her passion for this. I think she's involved with Enoch Arts. The little theater in District Two, and I'm thrilled that she's continuing to be involved and make that commitment.
Great. Any other questions or comments? How do we want to treat this item?
Consent.
Okay, consent will be.
That was easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is to approve the purchase of Q's Sewer Storm Camera Van. Welcoming Knight Internal Services Manager Matt Donleycott. Mr. Donleycott, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm here to present the purchase of a new Q's Sewer Storm Camera Van to replace our existing two thousand eight camera van. Our current van is very outdated. The software is no longer supported. We have updated the software twice and updating it again is not possible with their new software. It will, it's not compatible with our camera equipment. So replacing it is. The only option or chancing it and seeing if we can make this last a little bit longer isn't isn't an option we really want to take. This vehicle itself is very similar to a Vactor truck in that it's always going to be low on mileage. But the hours are always going to be very high. This vehicle didn't come with an hour meter, but talking with staff, we did a conservative estimate of twelve thousand five hundred hours. Which basically equates out to a little more than three hundred thousand miles that this vehicle has on it. The new van and equipment will give us more capabilities to better assist our citizens. Longer sewer side shot camera will allow us to go further past the right away to help locate issues on the customer side. And then we'll also be able to locate within one inch of accuracy. So we can minimize excavation for the customer and for ourselves. The total cost from Q's was four hundred and thirty five thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars plus Washington State sales tax. Our original plan was to purchase directly from Q's. They are part of the H G A C buy program. They are, that was a little more expensive, so we wanted to go with the direct purchase, but after talking with Melinda Monroe. The H G A C buy program was actually the preferred method for us. So we talked with Q's and they were able to match the price for us. And Melinda will bring that, I believe, next council cycle for you guys to hear to the I L A for that. We are not a member of that yet. So with that, we also negotiated a trade in of sixty thousand dollars for our fair van, which we felt was a very fair price. So the final cost will be three hundred and seventy five thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars plus tax. This is one hundred percent utility funded and it is in, it's within the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six approved budget. Available to answer any question.
First, our public works chair, Jane, who is brought up during public work.
I think we discussed it in finance, some in both committees. But I'd like to say, I think this is a really good investment, especially now that we can help. Our customers a lot more because in years past, people would have to dig up half of their yard trying to find a break. And with this new van, they can really pinpoint for the private plumbers where they need to repair. That and being able to. View all of our publicly owned lines also, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Jeff?
No doubt. I can't remember exactly which committee, but yeah, no significant concerns. Just to check, Matt, the difference between the four hundred and ten thousand and change in the agenda bill and the three seventy. Five thousand and change is just the sales tax.
Yes, yep. So I think what made it into the agenda package should be that H G A C buy contract before it was the direct. Purchase through Q's, but I think Melinda updated the packet with the correct, and I do have it here, I believe, if you want to see it.
Just want to make sure it's matching.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. So this this did get in the packet.
Okay, yep.
You know, the total purchase price is three hundred and seventy five, five twenty eight.
So the with the tax is the four.
Plus tax.
Yep.
Yep. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Other question.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have a real quick question about the other vector van that's on here. Blankety heck, but it's the last in this list, the two thousand nine. Didn't that already get replaced?
The Victor?
Yeah, the Victor two twenty one fifteen nine.
We did replace that last year. We have not taken delivery of it yet. It takes that long, yes.
Okay, they're making it five nine.
I believe so.
Melting in their yard.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is on order, though.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we treat this item?
Consent.
Consent is. Sir Donleycott, I see you're on to the next one. Subgrant agreement through Association of Washington Cities. Energy Audit Grant Program for Clean Building Performance Standards. Energy audits. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so this is, like you said, the A W C Energy Audit Grant for the Clean Buildings Performance Standards. Or C B P S for short, also known as the Clean Buildings Act. Just a little background on it, the C B P S was signed into law in two thousand nineteen as House Bill one two five seven. This affects all buildings over twenty thousand square feet. There's varying levels of compliance required depending on what tier building we have. There's tier one buildings and tier two. All of our buildings are considered tier two. The city owns five tier two buildings. Requirements are an energy audit. Twelve months of benchmarking for energy consumption. Develop and implement an operations and maintenance program. Develop an energy management plan. The kicker with that one is it has to be performed by a qualified energy manager. So we will be working with Ken Street to perform this work. The total grant is for eighty six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty eight cents. And it's based by square footage. I think it's like sixty two cents a square foot. This is a zero match grant. The five buildings that this pertains to is the Public Safety Building, Kitap Conference Center, Building Fifty. Admiral Theater, the Sheridan Community Center. And just one other note, the deadline for compliance is July first, twenty twenty seven. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but the grant was available, so we decided to move on.
You have any questions? Okay, is this brought before Public Works Committee?
The finance.
Finance again. Why am I always saying public work? Well, because you're from public.
Yes.
Yeah. So was our chair, is you?
I am, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, good. No, no concerns. We just talked about the buildings. I could brief this out real briefly last study session. Day free money. Thanks for jumping on it early.
Yep.
Got to love no match grants.
Not seen any questions. Go ahead.
What is Building Fifty?
The Navy Museum. It's a city owned building, building fifty, yep.
Thank you.
How do we want to treat this item?
Consent.
Consent is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is the professional service agreement with Consor North America Incorporated for manganese treatment facilities, Eastside Final Design. Welcoming our engineering project manager, Mr. David Powell. Go ahead, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. So this is the final design contract. Okay, final design contract for many facilities, Eastside. And pump station sixteen designer consor North America. So the project need is that our wells thirteen and fourteen exceed the U P A secondary. Maximum content levels for manganese. Manganese is an emerging health concern. And so we need treatment for the manganese in these wells. Pump station sixteen, co located with well thirteen. Has reached the fuse the light and has insufficient capacity during hot summer days. So we need to expand. Upgrade pump stations. So here's project location where you can see on the left hand side. We're up just a little north of northern part of Trace attend.
Hey, you mind, yeah, we're having hard time picking up on the. The microphone, so if you can maybe try to project a little.
Sure.
We do a little test now.
Test, test. Is that better?
A little louder.
Louder. Okay. So well thirteen and fourteen are about thirteen hundred feet distance from each other. This project is a little complicated because we're. Treating the water from both wells. And so we did a pre design. And I'll get into that in the next slide, but you can see here where how they're located. Well fourteen is to the north of well thirteen. Well thirteen is right there at Metta and Central Valley Road. Co located with pump station sixteen. So the treatment alternatives analysis was completed in twenty twenty two. Catalytic oxidation and filtration was a preferred method, the pilot study. They looked at three different filter medias in twenty twenty three. So we went out to competitive proposals and selected Consor for this work. They prepared alternatives analysis in twenty twenty four. And we discovered, we determined that the best location for this facility was at well site fourteen. And combined well site fourteen and the treatment plant and pump station sixteen at that site. Here's a drawing that shows a depiction of what we came up with for preliminary design. So the combined treatment plant and pump station sixteen is on the north. Side there, you can see that, and then an entrance on the south side coming in. Parking with a backwash tank right there around tank. And that backwash tank. You know, it pulls in the water from the filters. And then we reuse it, so it's not wasted. The waste water, it settled out right there and then the solids are then taken away. So it's an efficient facility, doesn't waste water. And then you pump the water back into the system after treatment. So the manganese treatment facilities are in the twenty twenty five capital program for six point five million. Consor's design fee, seven hundred and forty nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. And I have to say that that fee started out quite a bit higher than that. Bill Davis and myself went through the proposal. And looked at their their hours and talked with them and said, you need to get this down. A little bit. So it went from a little over nine hundred thousand down to just less than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar number. And we think that's about the right level of effort for this project. So the total cost of the project, according to their preliminary numbers, was seven point six million. We did apply for a. Drinking water state revolving fund loan of seven, for seven point six. Million and we were qualified for getting that loan. There were forty seven applicants. And we were like number seventeen on the list. So that was, that was a. A good win for us. It does qualify for principal forgiveness because. In the loan requirements, if you're treating a constituent of health concern. And your minority disadvantaged community, you can get up to seventy five percent principal forgiveness for that loan. So that would be a great. You know, win for us also. The. Recommendation is to move. To offer as mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Consor North America. Pending review for the final design, manganese treatment facility, Eastside. And pump station sixteen, the amount is seven hundred and forty nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. With substantially the same terms and conditions as presented in your project. And no other questions?
All right, now, I'm gonna ask.
Together with this presentation and. I was seeing Bill and I have worked on this project for quite some time.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I'm gonna take the leap and say this one will be published. Right, Jane?
No, I think it's a very needed project. At what point will we know? What percentage loan forgiveness that will be awarded?
We haven't gotten the, you know, the award letter yet. And given the current state of, you know, the government. We're not sure what the fate of that would be.
But we have a guaranteed low interest loan already, so.
We are, we are approved for, we're on the list.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, other questions?
Just Jeff relay. We also dug in a little bit on the different manganese treatment methods and. Just due diligence, this one filtration is the most common and cost effective, so.
Good question.
Um.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll breathe.
Okay, so one of the things in your slide was that manganese is an aesthetic consideration. Does that mean it just makes people feel like the water is not safe to drink, even though in fact it is?
It's the colors are completely different. Color candy.
Oh, there you are. Hi.
See, I answered that.
Very good question. And to clarify what the slide was saying, posters, let's make, what the slide was saying is that the M C L. That is set the maximum contaminant limit that we have to meet is a secondary. Limit, which is based on aesthetic, but more science has come out to show that there's some. Emerging evidence that those higher levels of manganese can have a public health effect. And so it it's treated, as he said, as a contaminant of emerging concern. And so they haven't quite gotten to the point where they've established a primary M C L for it, but they are encouraging water systems. To proactively get ahead of it and start to to treat for it because particularly, as always, our vulnerable customer. Anyone under the age of five, infants especially, really immune to underlying health problems. Are particularly sensitive and in it mostly affects infants and health, it affects neurological development. So it might be something that shows up later. So it is, it is, it is, I want to say. The evidence is showing that it very likely is of public health concern and they're encouraging water systems to get ahead. Of both rulemaking for M C L.
That's great. So the. It's the E P A that's slated to do this future research?
Yes. Yes. It's already, it's already on their list of contaminants of emerging concern that they, which is why the state revolving fund loan. There was dedicated funding specifically for contaminants of emerging concern and manganese was identified as one of them.
Yeah, thank you very much for clarifying that. I only have one other follow up question and it's it's. Policy and finance.
All right.
Okay. Um, so. Correct me if I'm wrong, this area is in our U G A but outside our city limits? It's north of Riddell?
Yes.
Okay. We're giving them water and wastewater services. Is that accurate? I know wastewater is not involved in this, just just water. Okay, and the total that we're we're getting is seven point six, we're hoping to get, don't want us jinx anything. Is seven point six million dollars. Okay, thank you.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, I think just a little bit of clarifying information. And I apologize if I'm behind on this, this has already been addressed. But it, does this have any implications? It's in the U G A. And I mean, I'm assuming there's other, lots of these areas are tied into our water and sewer, right? So is this going to primarily benefit folks in the U G A?
That's wrong, yes.
Yep. It's primarily benefiting non city Bremerton residents.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Straight section of East Brisbane.
Okay.
All the way up and that will be part of the area is for five of us.
Okay.
It will serve the three ninety eight zone and also the lower two forty when necessary, and that three ninety eight.
I'm sorry, three ninety eight, two forty?
Right. Um, there's a map I can show you. Pretty much all of our East Bremerton service period.
Okay, so do we have a rough percentage of city Bremerton residents versus non city Bremerton residents that are served with this new treatment plant?
We can get that for you.
Thank you.
Please.
Yep. I just, it's just good. Due diligence, just to know how much, I mean, it's not that I, you know. Don't want to support folks outside of the city. I just would like that information to do that, which is good.
I will, I will say, but remember that those outside of the city, like they offer by time. For their water.
Sure.
Because they are outside. So just to let that weigh in.
Thank you. I mean, I appreciate that. Thank you for agreeing to find out the percentage, rough percentage of city Bremerton versus non city Bremerton residents served by this treatment plant. Appreciate it. If it. Okay, let me just, the next layer, because you brought up another point to me, is. I mean, is it more, is it, is it? You know, I'm gonna let it go. I know what I'm trying to. I'm gonna let it go. Next, I'm done. Thank you.
Can I ask another?
Go ahead, Jane.
I don't know if this is what Jennifer's asking, but is it more expensive for us to produce water in these? U G As than it is for?
What's the cost benefit to it? Like, no, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you know what I'm trying to kind of?
Yeah, I know what you're trying to say, and I'm probably not saying it. And it's not like I want to. Not serve people in the U G A, but. I would really like to serve more. Than the city limits.
And at the same time, the revenue generation is a valid point. So.
But does it pay for itself? In the long run?
Yeah. Does it pay for itself and is it of more? Benefit to get more revenue from the non city Bremerton residents as opposed to city residents? What's the value?
Would they like to share a thing?
So. I'll let.
Thanks for letting me process that out, I'll have to be Jane.
I'll let Mr. Powell, if he wants to try to answer that or Cammy, and then Michael asks a question.
Well, I will, I will say. You know, we are a city and you are the city council. That is true, but you also in the service of customers of our utility, our water system utility. You equally are a representative in that realm for those outside of city limits. So just something to keep in mind, and we have to be fair and equitable across our customer base, right? Whether they're in the city or not. So, and it is an enterprise fund. It's not coming from the general fund, so.
Did you have something you want to add?
I did this one also as a.
Show, please.
There are requirements to provide this water service and it can't. Not provided.
No, and and I don't think that, I'm not, and it's not provided. But and are all the other? Treatment plans up to code then? How many other manganese treatment plants do we have? There must be ones.
No, this is the first.
Okay.
This is the first that we're putting in. We have one in the C I P on the south side in Anderson Creek Well Field. That potentially will have to be put in down the road.
Not all wells produce this water with manganese in it.
Okay, yeah, all right. And we should understand that. Down the road, this will be requirement that we have to treat. And so we're getting ahead of it at a time when there's loans available specifically for this type of treatment. And ultimately, for me as a water manager. All of my customers are customers, public health is equally a concern. And our goal is to provide the best quality of water. If we have some emerging evidence that manganese. Is of a public health concern, I want to act on that. And I would encourage.
I don't think anybody wants to have our city utility. Have two layer, two levels of service to different people. It's just that. The resident, I mean, two thirds of the people with Bremerton addresses. Live in the city of Bremerton, one third live outside, but we. The utility is expanding. Way out. So I mean, most people don't even know that they don't live in the city of Bremerton. So I think the thing is, is we're trying to. Protect the people who do live in the city of Bremerton too, to not have to. Pay extra for service areas outside of the city.
Because these big capital charges show up in in the costs of the people of the city of Bremerton, not the people of who live outside Bremerton.
But they do. That's what they, through their rates and the.
Through their rates.
Ratepayers, they're ratepayers. And so don't we charge a different?
One point five. One point five. Yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah. So they're paying extra because they aren't residents.
Right, but then covering this capital improvement. I don't think they're actually.
Yeah.
I mean, if it were, we wouldn't have to be borrowing on money.
No worries. Hey, so Michael's been waiting patiently for.
Left and right.
Michael.
Sorry.
I look at this as we're in the water business for our residents and for other folks. It's because we have the capacity to do that. We've, we've done some testings. It's not a crisis, but it's a level of concern that would be referred to the second level. So we're being proactive and we're making sure. You know, I don't want years down the road for us to then say like, like Anna would do on. What day is it? March eleventh?
Twelve.
Well, the council talked about this and did nothing, you know, like, so, you know.
Be quoted in absentia.
Yeah, I, I, from the future. So, you know, I just think that I, I think we're doing the, doing the right thing and, you know. This low cost loan, possibly with some of it being forgiven. I think it's, I, I think you guys have done a great job. So I kind of understand where we're going, but. You know, we, we, we're in the water business. What do we always say about our water? It's the best.
It's the best water.
Well.
I brag about it.
So this is keeping it the best. So I support this, so.
Ed, you have a comment?
Yeah, so like Cammy was saying, you're basically the board of water utility, right? And we have a water system plan that was approved by this board, this body. It has a water service area. We don't think in terms of inside city limits or outside city limits for our capital improvements. It's a water utility. We manage the whole utility and prioritize projects to serve. And provide the right level of service for the whole utility, all of our customers, all of your customers, right? So we think of it that way. The only way we segregate is with the rate, the outside city rate, which is at fifty percent surcharge, right? And then if somebody wants service outside the city limits, we execute an O U A for the annexation agreement for that property. Ultimately, hopefully that leads to an annexation where they're an inside city limits customer someday. And they don't pay a fifty percent surcharge, but as we know, annexation isn't happening, happening regularly.
Twenty years.
But this cost is paid for by the utility and it is spread across all of the rates for all of the ratepayers. So everybody is gonna, if we see an increase in rates. This capital project is going to participate in helping to pay this loan back. So it's the whole utility. is going to participate in helping to pay this loan back, so it's the whole utility. So I don't know if that helps, but thinking of it in terms of inside city limits and outside city limits, and then segregating customers in terms of level of service, that's probably not the right way.
I, I'm gonna, can I, can I take a pause on this? I don't think I mentioned at all about segregating or giving them a different level of service, I think I was just curious about the percentage of out of city, and the reasoning is because we have been talking about UGA and annexation and how it is important to think about growing and expanding our city through annexation.
I was referring to Honest Comments, and these customers won't pay, these customers will pay, everybody will pay. Um, and I know, uh, Jane, you were concerned about, hey, they're outside and we have insights to be cut, so there is like a sorting hat happening here a little bit, but, um, I, I think we look at it as a utility, we plan as a utility, we provide service as a utility. We do have a different approach for outside city customers or rate, and for that, for you, that is, is the thing. I think that's pretty much how we-
I, I think the big, um, concern that a lot of people have is, is that one and a half times rate really covering all these expensive projects that we're having to do because of, you know, just the water quality outside of, you know, where they're not getting water from our dam. So, that's something we wanna be sure that, that our constituents within the city are, that they're being covered by that one point five rate that we're charging outside customers.
That's what I'm feeling like too.
So we look at it holistically as a utility, and we look at our rate increases holistically as a utility, and look at all of the capital improvements, and there's a dashboard that we look at every year that comes up with what that rate increase needs to be to maintain our fund balance, to make sure we're covering all the capital costs. And so, um, I can't answer that question, Jane, like, is fifty percent enough? But I can say that as a whole, as a utility, when we look at all of the revenue and all of the expenditure, and we look at what our rate increases are, we are covering all of the costs when we do that. And project, and that's why rates go up and down, because sometimes we'll have a big surprise capital improvement, and then everybody's rate goes up, but we don't separate like the outside, like the rate increase is the same for all of the customers, right? It's one rate increase.
If we are the water utility board, when, uh, did you say an OUA, is that correct?
Yeah, outside utilities are the right.
Yeah, wh- when you sign one of those, is that brought before council?
No, it's not required to go before council.
Oh, okay.
It's in the BMC, it's codified the requirement. Um, it's, I believe they're recorded against the property, so we can track it at that way.
Okay.
But it's not a requirement for that to-
Okay, yeah, just because I've never seen one.
Yeah.
Thanks.
No, and I, I really do appreciate the, the discussion, um, as you said, it's relevant to, to what we're working on. Um, but just to check again, Kami, when you said it services these two wells serviced east Bremerton, is that all the way down to Minette area? Or is it, uh?
It can, it, usually the two forty zone is fed by the mix of groundwater and surface water coming from west Bremerton.
Okay.
But there are times that we, if the demand is high enough in the two forty, we can move water through that pump station, uh, sixteen, from the three ninety-eight, which is just above it, down to the forty. Um, and so it has that ability, but mostly it's, aside from that piece along the shoreline, all of the rest of the east Bremerton is served by those two wells.
Okay, so a significant part of,
Yes.
One and two, and one of three, yeah, so I'd need a very significant number of folks in health utility inside city limits, so, yeah.
But I'll try to get you that estimate.
I appreciate that.
End of the map.
And I appreciate the discussion, thank you, thank you.
Right, sure. Any other questions or comments? How do we wanna treat this item?
Consent.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you both for, this is really, really good work. Should've mentioned that at the top.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is the information-only presentation, it's the overview of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan City Services Element. This will be a full presentation at next week's council meeting to receive public comment. Mr. Jackson, welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, city council.
Hey.
We've done it, we've gotten to the last element of the comprehensive plan for review before your one more review.
So Jared, is your presentation today the same one as you gave on February twenty-fourth at the Planning Commission Workshop, so we can follow along if we want?
Very simple.
Okay, thanks.
So I am joined here tonight by a number of city staff, uh, presenting, so we've, we've kind of packed the house.
Right.
City engineer Ned Lever, uh, utility manager Chance Brum, representing stormwater, uh, utility manager Bill Davis, representing wastewater, uh, parks director, uh, Tim Barker, uh, and we, Kami Appleby, I don't know, maybe around. Uh, utility manager Kami Appleby for drinking water, uh, assistant chief John Payne for the fire department, uh, chief Tom Wolf for BPG. Uh, so that being said, all of these staff members came to the planning commission meeting for city services. Ideally, at the end of this presentation, uh, council will provide some direction where they want all of this staff to attend the regular session meeting also, as it is, uh, kind of a large ask for staff time, but completely up to the planning commission, excuse me, the city council. Call that. Sorry, not to, uh, there we go, presentation. There we go, excellent. Okay, and we, we begin all of these comprehensive plan meetings with the, the same kind of review of the comprehensive planning process, we've been asked in the past by the city council not to include that in the study session portion, so I'm just going to go through these slides of centers growth, uh, what our growth strategy is, that's available on bremerton2044.com, a number of videos that we have available for public education, uh, reviewing the, what the city council has reviewed thus far for the comprehensive plan dates. Uh, the, uh, by the way, planning commission will be next month reviewing, uh, the final documents for the comprehensive plan. Staff is working on fine tuning those documents now, uh, but next month, planning commission will be making their recommendation on the comprehensive plan to the city council, that will kick off city council's review of the entire plan. Uh, for the city services element, uh, the vision for the city services element is for the city of Bremerton to strive to deliver exemplary municipal services to our community when and where it is needed. Uh, specific goals and policies representing that vision, uh, were previously reviewed by the city council and are in, uh, the draft document. Uh, the city services section includes, uh, the city services that you see up here on the screen. A number of these services also have independent, long-range planning documents that have been reviewed uh, by the city council and adopted. Uh, drinking water being one of those examples, uh, wastewater is, is currently updating their long-range, uh, comprehensive planning document. Uh, stormwater also reviewed and adopted by city council, uh, and with services for police, fire, uh, parks, also starting their review for their long-range planning document. Uh, transportation was just at the city council last month. Uh, schools, we have a number of, uh, links in the city services section to, uh, the capital facility plans for the Bremerton, Central Kitsap, and South Kitsap School Districts, all within the city of Bremerton. Uh, Puget Sound Energy, our energy provider, Cascade Natural Gas, and a number of telecommunications companies. Uh, services areas, as we've been discussing just with the last item on the agenda, can vary wildly. Uh, for drinking water that goes well into our UGA and outside of it, drinking water isn't considered an urban service, so it's not necessarily, uh, limited to urban areas, whereas wastewater is considered an urban service and is limited to our incorporated city and urban growth areas. But even then, it might not be so simple, the Central Kitsap Urban Growth Area, uh, is, has a bit of sewer service from the city of Bremerton, but largely is sewered by the county. Uh, which brings me to this map, it's fairly interesting, of our urban growth areas and incorporated cities. Uh, the yellow area being the city limits as they exist today, uh, the purple areas being the urban growth areas that were from last year, twenty twenty-four, and the orange areas being the urban growth areas associated to the city as adopted by Kitsap County. Um, the Central Kitsap Urban Growth Area, the largest splotch of orange there up on the screen, uh, finally associated to the city of Bremerton with, uh, the Kitsap County Comprehensive Plan, along with a number of areas that, uh, already are, are receiving sewer service by the city, um, a couple of property owner requests, and a number of city-owned properties, um, brought into our urban growth area for future annexation. Uh, that being said, uh, the service areas, like I was saying, can vary pretty wildly, and they can even go, uh, down to specific I L A agreements between differing jurisdictions, so. Uh, moving on to level of service, so, uh, these are the city services, uh, provided actually by the city, uh, and these are the established levels of service, um, uh, within the city services section. So, uh, fire and emergency services, their level of service is a six-minute response time. So you call nine-one-one within six minutes, uh, that is the level of service in which you should have responded, um, from fire and emergency services. Uh, law enforcement, their level of service is one point eight police officers per thousand population, uh, with two hundred and fifty square feet of office space, uh, per officer. Uh, parks department, um, their level of service is contained in the PROS plan. Um, they have an adopted ten-minute walk shed, uh, from, uh, parks. Um, streets and transportation, we have a minimum level of service E for city roadways, uh, minimum level of service D for wash dot designated highways of statewide significance. And, uh, we have a multimodal level of service that's defined in the transportation element attachment F. A sewer and wastewater has a more general level of service, a level that allows collection of peak wastewater discharge plus infiltration and inflow, uh, whereas stormwater management, um, level of service is more about keeping compliance with our Western Washington Phase Two, uh, permit, and to ensure that development that's proposed complies with the city stormwater management code. Our water level of service is a hundred and fifty gallons, uh, per residential unit for daily average use, and three hundred gallons, uh, for P. Uh, public buildings, we have, uh, an, another more general statement, amount necessary to maintain current space without adding capacity, uh, future planning of sixteen hundred square feet per thousand population. Uh, all items that we need to have a level of service established for. And then each discipline has a capital facilities plan, a six-year capital facility plan is required, and that is required to inventory existing capital facilities or cast maturity facilities, proposed location, capacity of those facilities, and like I was saying, that six-year capital facility plan is required. Up here on the screen, just for the people at home, uh, this is our twenty twenty-five capital, excuse me, construction projects. So, if people are curious about these capital facility, uh, projects in the future, there's examples this year that will be constructed for transportation, stormwater, and sewer uh, throughout the city, that's on the city webpage. Uh, and reminding the people at home that there are more ways to participate, uh, the wastewater comprehensive plan currently has their public comment period open until March twenty-ninth. Uh, managing engineer Bill Davis's contact information up there. And that there is currently a public survey for the Parks and Recreation Department, um, through April thirtieth for their PROS plan. And then questions from the council or the public.
Okay, Jane, go ahead.
Can you go back to that list of, of what we're saying our services are? Okay. So, you're saying twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-four, our level of service for law enforcement is one point eight police officers per thousand. That would mean that right now, today, we would have seventy-four officers, which we don't have.
That's correct, and I believe you're at, what, one point four?
Yeah, police staff would be at one point.
Okay, so,
Police staff.
So this is just a, a wish list? Because, I mean, we, we aren't meeting this, what we're saying.
Oh.
We did it once, two thousand and seven was one point.
Yeah.
That was our first grant.
Right. So what I'm saying is, why aren't we listing it at what it really is?
So this is, uh, what our level of service has been established in the past, and we're trying to maintain this, it would be up to indivi-, uh, I think annual budgeting to, to staff that one point eight officers. Uh,
Are you funded?
No, we're not, we haven't funded for it, and, I mean, today, and I'm basing that on forty thousand population, which is lower than we have. So, let's see. And this goes all the way to twenty forty-four, so we got another thirty thousand, so it would mean by that time, based on if we're really doing one point eight, we're gonna have well over a hundred, or need well over a hundred officers, right? So when, I mean, this might be a goal, but it's not reality.
That is long-term capital facility plans, that's generally the case, where we may need a pump station here or there for water or sewer that doesn't exist today. But if our population grows, we create those facilities, this is also sneaking out that long range for the number of officers that would be needed.
But our, our population has grown, and we don't, we're not anywhere near one point eight.
Jane, can I put this in a different perspective?
Sure.
The one point eight is the chief's FTE ceiling, if you will, it's not his actual reality, but if he had his best-case scenario, you'd go to the mayor and then to the council and the budget and say, my FTE ceiling is one point eight, I need seventy-seven officers, I'm authorized, I'd like that. Is that an accurate assessment? And so that's why it's there.
Okay.
But maybe we'll have better economic times in the future.
Okay, I just don't want the public to think that this is reality. You know, this, this is more like a wish list. I don't know, is the fire department, are they able to respond in six minutes?
Uh, I can refer that to fire, but I talked to the chief the other day and said that the response rate is around six minutes right now.
Yeah, we, uh, we can hit that inside city limits, I think right now, we're about eighty-six percent of the time, or, or after residence, or the location.
Okay. And then when we get to streets and transportation, we're saying we have a minimum LOS E for city roadways. That's for cars or vehicles, that's not for people, right?
Friends.
And then our, um, PSRC, their definition of, uh, safety for pedestrians is different than what Wash Dot's is. And so I'm assuming that the city, you're following the, the lower standard of PSRC, or are we following Wash Dot's?
Multimodal level of service. Defined transportation element, E attachment F, so, we have in the, uh, transportation element of the compound, there's an appendix and attachment F that defines the multimodal level of service, and so, um, that's uh, and that multimodal level of service isn't based on the level of traffic stress or pedestrians and bikes, it's, uh, that level of service is designed, defining the need for connectivity or development projects to provide connectivity for bikes and pets. But it's not defining the, uh, PLTS, PLTS at this time, I don't think, and that active transportation plan we're postponing to deliver.
Yep.
Is really where the heavy lifting should happen to define that level of traffic stress criteria. Is really where the heavy lifting should happen to define that level of traffic stress criteria.
Okay, and where we have the level, uh, the L O S E for city roadways. We can, uh, the council does have the ability to change that by ordinance, correct?
Yes, I think that's also the contingency requirement. And it's for intersection, for delay, for vehicle intersection, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, that L O S is. That's all about vehicles, it's not about anything but vehicles.
Hundred percent about delay at intersections for vehicle.
Okay. So even though it's going into the comp plan. It's still something that, because we do have a, a city ordinance that, that lists a level of service E. But we could. The council can change that by ordinance.
In such that the words are legal about that, but I think you can use that ordinances, right?
Yep.
Um, and what is the impact on the comp plan then? Do you need to do an update of the comp plan and change our level of service?
Happen after the comp plan's adopted?
Hopefully we can get it done before then, but I'm not sure, it might be after adoption. I put the question to M S R C to, to see if they can help speed up an answer.
Okay, so it sounds like the verdict is we can't decide that tonight.
Right.
So, um.
It's a question.
Are we ready to see Donna?
Denise's hand up. I just want to ask a clarifying question, which is about the standards.
Okay.
And then defer directly to Denise.
Okay.
Okay. So these standards are like, I have a standard that I should vacuum the house twice a week. I don't need that standard.
We're exceeded.
Got it.
Thank you.
Denise, go ahead, please.
I do feel the need, though, as somebody who has sat on the Public Safety Committee now for about three years. Um, our police chief and, uh, fire chief, uh, both are concerned about the level of service they're able to deliver. You know, based on what they have now, uh, uh, you know, I think they're, they're both voicing and trying to let us know. Uh, in, uh, with the exception, may, maybe they are asking for the money. Um, but I, I do want to not just push it aside like, okay, this in, in the best world. Um, the, this is data based, uh, projections, uh, and. You know, I'd love to see, uh, more formal plan of, of checking in with that or, or whatever. I'm particularly concerned about our public safety, uh, with our police department and fire. So knowing that we're not going to discuss that tonight, I just wanted to echo kind of the concerns that Jane raised. Uh, and say that I hope that we start talking soon about planning financially for the future too. Um, and then, uh, Garrett, thanks for the great presentation and, uh, I think that, uh. Uh, your boss, Director Spencer, once told me, we'll get to that when we talk about services, and this is when it is. Um, as we see more and more multifamily, uh, development, uh, particularly probably in District Two. Um, uh, and in other areas, that equals generally less open space. And a need for more park space, uh, particularly here in District Two. Um, so my question is, uh. Where does that, how does that come through? Um, is that going to be then with, uh, Mr. Barker's pros plan? Is that based on these new projections? I'd like a little bit more detail, uh, and then, of course, we don't charge impact fees too, I don't believe. So if you could. Uh, go into that just a little bit, what is the planning that goes on after this to connect it to what we actually do?
Right, and that's, this is a great segue into the pros plan, which, uh, the presentation mentioned. They're just now starting that, they've had that public survey out for comment at the moment. And, uh, these types of concerns, as far as open space, uh, capital facility planning will certainly be addressed with the updated. So it's a very good time to be dovetailing into that planning effort. Uh, they have an adopted level of service from their current flow pros plan that's included in the comprehensive plan. Uh, but I think that you'll find fresher answers to this question after the pros plan update, uh, is complete.
Okay, thank you, Garrett.
That was a great answer, Garrett.
Need a hundred twenty two cops.
No, we're, we're identifying right now like that. The, the ten minute, uh, walk is a national standard. Again, just like I was talking about other standards, is the goal we want us to get to. We're a little over seventy percent, I think, right now with our current structure. And so within the pros plan, we'll be making some recommendations as far as potential areas to be able to, uh, increase that number.
Great.
On a bit will be in District Two.
Hear that, Denise?
That's no surprise. Thank you.
Anna, go ahead.
Oh, great, thank you. Um, I'll just mention that, um, District Two has Baton Park.
Oh, yeah, have you tried to take a kid, have fun?
I'm so sorry.
It's a memorial park. If you're sorry, it's a pocket park.
Good, you, you go ahead on.
Okay, good. So I'm just mentioning that District Two has a number of parks, they have East Park, they have the Tan Park, they have, um. Sheridan Park and they have Madrona Trails. We have Lulu Haddon, which has been closed since October twenty two, well, hasn't had a playground.
All at the south end of a very tall district.
Ditto, ditto. Sadly, that's true for me too. But however entrancing it is to wander unchecked through a garden of bright images, I'm gonna come back to the, um, level of servants. Uh, thank you all for clarifying the one point eight police personnel. Um, I'm, I'm gonna move on to parks, which is you have adopted the ten minute walk campaign, uh. Has any, uh, consideration been given to tracking how people use parks? How, how frequently they use them?
Be you.
I didn't know if you're asking.
I am, I am, or.
If this is a lengthy answer, Mr. Barker, I'm gonna have to ask you to come up so that we can.
I can make it, I can try to make it quick. No.
Okay.
There's, there's, uh, services out there that we could potentially utilize, but we have not taken advantage of them.
So you've adopted this ten minute walk campaign, so, um. Denise, feel free to jump right in here. Um, I know a lot of my constituents are much further than a ten minute walk from any part. Um, have, do you have a map of how many people are outside that ten minute walk field?
Yeah, we'll be updating that, so the twenty twenty plan shows that.
Okay. Um, okay, that would be great. Um, and I'd particularly like to know how many children are there. Um, I'm gonna move on to streets and transportation, uh, and just to underline what Jane has said, um. Which is, we are required, I understand, by Wash Dot to designate, to designate State Route Three, Three O Four and Three Ten. Um, as highways of statewide significance with a minimum L O S D standard. I'm going off a different chart that I can read. So if there's discrepancies, you know. Um, but we, this council can designate. All other streets, probably not Three O Three. Uh, as. Having a different level of service, um, one that is equally balanced between. Serving, serving the transportation needs of non-motorized residents and visitors and vehicular ones. If you go to the underlying, uh, B M C eleven point one, two point oh six zero, there is no, uh. Everything here is, talks about transportation. It at no point says it must be motorized transportation. Although you can imply that because they're asking about parking impacts, but nothing in the B M C itself. Says that this has to be motorized vehicular transportation. And I totally support any rapid effort by this council to amend these B M Cs. Um, we are eliminating parking requirements left, right and center. We are designated by the county, you guys remember, sorry, this council remembers from previous presentations. For which I cannot give the date, Michael. Um, that, um, employment in Bremerton is scheduled to rise exponentially more. Than any other part of Kitsap County. We are being designed, um, and welcoming, I think. The change it to a dense, car-free city and a B M C that reflects that. And that does not rely solely on how quickly vehicles can pass through intersections. Would I think foster this and make us a more attractive city? You know, if you could walk here, people would come here to enjoy that. Um, so. The sewer wastewater level, I'm so sorry, I don't really understand. What I have in front of me is the level that allows collection of peak wastewater discharge plus infiltration and in, inflow, like, does that mean no spills? Chance, I'm looking at you. I am, I am. Is Bill here? Oh. You passed it behind the tall people.
Yeah, when I read that, you know, great ball plus, there's a combination of stormwater and wastewater, so that. It's like C S O. We, we have a public department of college and we can allow up to one event per year per C S O alcohol, but there is some.
Okay. Okay, it, I, I just think, and again, for the public, that it'd be great to have that in there. Um, good. Yeah, yeah, so, you know, so that regular people can get it that don't have instant access to Bill Davis. Uh, okay, and then, um. Stormwater seemed very clear to me. I have a discrepancy in the figures here, two hundred gallons per equivalent residential unit, which is what I have. But in your presentation, it was one hundred non-peak, three hundred peak, is that correct?
Uh, one fifty.
Okay, one fifty.
Right.
Okay.
So since the, uh, planning commission meeting, the two hundred level is, uh. Department of Health recommendation. And the one fifty is what the city has adopted, our water plan, uh, for average use and peak use three hundred, so we made that correction. It'll be, it'll be that way.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I had that in front of me, I could blow it up so that I could read it, so pardon my, on that one. And then finally, on public buildings, um. The amount necessary to maintain current space, this is assuming that people are gonna come back to work in person.
Um. I don't think that it took into account, uh, working from home as a trend, so this has been our ongoing, uh, public building standard, uh, we need to have one. Uh, I can look into that to get more answers if that's not satisfying.
Because, I mean, you're here more often than I, but generally when I'm here, there's a lot of echo.
Uh, I know our department. In the office.
Okay.
Happened for some time.
Okay. I'm not picking on D C D.
Oh, no, I.
I wouldn't dare.
Just that.
Okay. I guess wouldn't click thing on that, but I'm, I'm almost done. Okay, cause with yours. Okay, so I really just wanted to say thank you. I don't have any more questions for right now, except to say, how long can we comment on this?
Um, ideally, we'd be getting, uh, you know, with every, every time we bring you news to the city council, if you have, uh, suggestions or comments. Uh, please provide them now so we can start working on them.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
So when you talk about how many square foot. Right. You need for public buildings. Up in, uh, police and fire, they have. A certain amount of square footage per person. So. That would mean in twenty forty four, the police station alone would have to be thirty thousand five hundred square feet, right? Is that part of this whole public buildings calculation? Or are they two separate things?
I don't have an answer, I can explain that in the presentation next week to make sure that that's clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then whatever we need for fire too.
Ned, do you have some insight on that?
Well, I don't know the answer either, but the, the metric is per thousand of population, it's not per employee.
Not, I, it says right up there.
The public building?
It says law enforcement services, two hundred and fifty square feet of office space. No, I was asking if that was included. Part of the calculation of the public building square footage.
I'll make sure we add some clarity.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't understand the public building.
Sure. Cool, thanks Garrett. So. At a high level, obviously, G M A State says, hey, city, you must plan for the next twenty years. And so all these documents are obviously helping us plan, this case for city service. Um. Going back to police officers as an example. So the twenty sixteen comp plan had the same thing, one point out officers, you know, per population. And it said, hey, by twenty twenty one, you should probably have seventy seven officers. We obviously are not there, um, rather than close, so. Is there any requirement to also put in this plan, not only what the goal is, but the, you know. Specific steps to take to get there, recommended actions, like what is the actual plan to, to be able to get to that point? Or are we just required, or is it just required to say, this is our goal and we'll figure it out after this past?
There's potential funding sources identified for each discipline, so it's, that's kind of the roadmap on how to get there. Uh, now, every year is going to be different circumstances financially for the city, different choices on what to fund and what not to fund. So I think that that every year is going to be, uh, a council, a decision. Where, what funds we have and where to go.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting this. Sometimes we have great detailed city plans that really give us a step-by-step guide, some that say, hey, you should be exploring A, B, C, D, and E. Um. And in this case, looking at the past plan, it's really just. Get to one point eight and that's, you know, it's not, it's not happened, so. I'm kind of looking to see if there's anything we can do now as the council. To make sure that, you know, another ten years don't go by and we haven't seen this particular city service mess. Uh, putting it in this document.
And I imagine, you know, if you wanted to work with the, with Chief Wolf on, on how to get to those, that one point eight number over. Whatever projected amount of time, that's something council, mayor could.
Council in the past, we used red light camera money towards law enforcement and moved that to another department. Was, that cut six officers out of the project in the past. And the, the need at that time, because of financial woes in the city, uh, you prioritized other places. And that, that's your priority. That's just what you guys get to decide. I think my job as a department head is to point out to you where we're at, where I think we should be and what's going on out here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I think a lot of it too is just feedback from your constituents that I talk to constantly. I think you guys get all the same phone calls I get. Um, and then how do we maintain that going into the future so we don't end up right, because we were there in oh seven.
Right.
We've fallen away from that, how do we not do that? But I also think that. If you look at every city in Washington state, other councils are having this conversation. So we're not alone, we're not unique. Um, but how do we, as we fall in hard times in the future, how do we not go backwards so drastically? Um, when I took over, we were at, uh, fifty nine and we fought our way up to fifty two. So that was going from sixty six to fifty two, so that, we've made progress. We just, we need to continue to sustain it. Things that we can look at, um, Linda and Rose, we're looking at different red light chances that we're looking at. Uh, speed platforms that would generate revenue, but also safety. Or, you know, places that we just can't control. Um, that would be a place to look at, well, a levy. If the one tenth to one percent sales tax. Uh, there, there are different things and, and that's where, you know.
Yeah, so.
Gets to be creative too.
So I think these are like fantastic ideas and so what I'm suggesting is to put these in here for. Put, put those in the comp plan to call them out and say, hey, these are options that could be explored over the next twenty years or obviously the next ten to the next comp plan. And then not only for, for law enforcement, but all the city services, right? Um, just to make sure that they're all in there, because I think ideally what we'd be doing every budget season and. Every time we hit a major milestone, I was saying, let's go back to the comp plan, um, are we? Are we looking at everything that was in there? Cause one thing that drives me nuts is when we, we pass the pan, pass the plan, it goes on the shelf, right, and it's not actually executed, so. Um, I don't know, that'd be my, my two cents, if we can get that in there. Andrea's hand up. Andrea, go ahead.
If I could just add is that I think it's great, we can do a laundry list of, of ideas. But we won't have an action plan that says we're gonna do it this way. The comment that's not the purpose, you set your goal, you had to get ideas about how to accomplish those goals. But we're not going to do the work plan. That, that's going to be the ongoing work that the chief is going to work with you. The other chiefs are going to work with you for implementation of that. Just like if you wanted to establish a level of service A, imagine what that's going to do to you financially. You're gonna have to work with the public works group to figure out how to achieve that. So we can put all sorts of ideas in here. Here's how we can get to that point, but we're not going to write that action strategy out. Uh, we must do it this way. So I just wanted to set expectations that we weren't going to write that plan out at this specific time.
No, very clear, but I think put in the, here are options to explore for future people in these seats that, as they look at it, would be fantastic.
Other questions? My comment is, I agree with Jeff and not action plan, but just similar to our council goals, we don't have an action plan there, but we've assigned it. I think in future councils, especially when it comes time to budget, we need to be refreshed on what's in the comprehensive plan, because I guarantee you, we haven't had those discussions on every year. When we go through the budgets and look at this, that is not brought up and else should be. If this is to be taken seriously, we should be looking at the comp plan and based on our decision, just like we're looking at our council goals. And when things come up saying, does that fit our council goals? So maybe it's on the council kind of established kind of framework where for the future councils, they rely on a document that we create that says, oh, by the way, budget time, you need to go look at these elements in the comp plan. And, uh, let's see what the mayor's budget does to address those. Now, having said that, we all face reality, right? What our budget looks like too, but at, at least we're making an informed decision on where to spend the money. Right? So we're gonna see you, the rest of the council, good? We're gonna see you next week. Can we ask that your presentation be put in the packet?
Uh, before.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Just a little clarification, uh, is this council want all staff members present today here next week?
So it's gonna be public comment, uh, only, or is this also invite the council comment too?
Information only, and the.
So that's usually just public.
Direct people to answer, but.
Okay, so how does the council feel on, on that?
People should have, I think the public should have the same access that we're privileged to get. Talk, be able to have the people who have the answers there.
Oh, how many, how much more opportunity will the public have on this?
So, uh, the council will start reviewing the conference plan in totality, uh, next April. So, uh, they'll have those, uh, remaining meetings at the city council, uh, in the next planning commission, next month also.
Okay, so if there is questions next week by the public, is there a, a mechanism where you'll be taking down those questions and answers will be provided?
Absolutely.
Would that be a preferred alternative? Anna, would that suffice? Okay, that would suffice, so.
Also, if we can publicize these other opportunities that people have, will have.
On the planning commission. Brevettontwentyfortyfour.com.
No, I mean, something a little more specific than that.
But if we have questions next week that we can't get, uh, answers based on the people over there, maybe an F A Q or something on your website, is that, you know what I'm saying? Some type of deal.
Perfectly reasonable. We do that.
All right, so then we're saying, if you want to come to the council meeting, those people can, if you say. It's up to your boss, the mayor. So. Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Not like, oh, Ron's, oh, Ron can't leave.
Next item is item B two. Like to welcome Public Works Operation Manager, Mr. Ron Moore. And to give us an overview of the five-year plans for paving, chip sealing and sidewalks. Welcome, Mr. Moore.
I'm so satisfied, everybody.
Um, let me start first. So I'm presenting the, uh, five-year plans for paving, chip seal and sidewalk. Um. I have, uh, all of them. I, uh, decided that I would drill some fixtures in. It's always good to see our, our crews out there working and doing the, the, uh, items that, that we say we're doing, um, rather than using just generic fixtures. So. Um, so the five-year plan is on this map here. Um, it's also listed. It is on the city's website in two locations under the preservation program and then on their operations page. And it is, um, primarily, um, with funded through the hundred thousand dollars that is in the street fund for residential streets. It's not necessarily, um, roads that are completely, um, needing repair. It is based on doing a cost analysis, trying to repair the road and repave it before it deteriorates too long and has to be completely reconstructed. Um, for twenty twenty-five, we are doing, uh, loxiegans, which is going to be contracted. Um, city staff is going to be doing the, um, the ADA ramps. And then we have M L K, which is part of it with the utilities project. And we have the Belleclaire Valley Road. Um, the A D T on the loxiegans is throwing and that road is in desperate need of being repaired, um, as a major road coming in and out of the city. Do you have a question?
I do, but I'm waiting for you to finish like.
Okay.
Like a polite person would.
And this list is also on the, um, the website. We're averaging at least a mile every year of paving. Um, the next is the five-year chip seal plan. Um, when I presented at the county, the public works committee, it was suggested that I do it by areas. And so this list, um, is by area. Um, so this year I just have the list for this year up. Um, but in twenty twenty-five, we'll be working primarily over in the west Fermiton area from about Calo to the west, to highway three in that area for twenty twenty-five. Uh, twenty twenty-six will be over in the Manette area. Twenty twenty-seven is west and south of highway three. In twenty twenty-eight, uh, we're from Calo to the water in all of those areas, north and east of Calo. And in twenty twenty-nine, we'll be over of, in the east Fermiton area and north of the Manette area. Um, and every year, as I'm in this position, I'll be updating this with new, uh, new roads for the different areas of that. And I just have the lists of the roads, um, for this year. And it is almost five miles, which is roughly a little bit less than the budget of the six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the long-awaited, um, sidewalk plan. Um, is on this map, it's hard to read of the areas. Um, so I'll put the list up, which makes it a little bit easier to see. Um, as you can see, it's kind of small here. Um, but I left twenty twenty-nine open. Um, because this is just the work that is driven by the streets department for maintenance. Well, driven through parter graph, um, driven through the grant work, um, that, that we get. So I didn't want to load twenty twenty-nine and not have made commitments to do these other, um, sidewalks or ADA ramps. And then have to push it out further. So twenty twenty-nine, I've left open intentionally to move, um, projects that come up that are emergent, so I can remove some from years and then put them down. So that way they're still committed, but they're not. I'm not overcommitted, um, our staff. In, um, the budget, we committed to doing fifteen hundred feet of, of sidewalk and fifteen ramps. And this year, we're at a little bit less than two thousand feet of committed work and thirty ADA ramps, um, that we, that we're committed to. Um, so we're gonna overachieve in that, um, that work this year. Um. So with that, those are the two locations of where those lists are located on the city website. Are there any questions, any comments?
Go ahead, Jan.
Okay, um, so we have roads that aren't shown here. And I know that they're listed as needing reconstruction, but in actuality, we're never going to have the money to reconstruct some of these residential streets. So does that mean we're not going to do any repairs? Like, a lot of times there's like a big settlement or something. Is that something that we would just repair and then?
Those are, what we call those structural patches.
Yes.
So there are some structural patches that are in our workflow that aren't listed on here at all. But that will help bring up the, the P C I rating of the road up to a little bit higher, which would bring in a candidate for an overlay or chip seal in the future. So there are roads where we have, um, that will be being patched, um, through a structural patch. Um, what's not included in a lot of this is that when we go to pave a road, if it has ADA ramps or sidewalks that are not up to standard, we have to include that work when we do it. So some of these roads were picked prior to my coming to the city. Um, so I, I believe that some of them were, were picked based on the budget.
Whether or not any.
And whether they didn't need to have any other, um, construction work done.
Okay, I'm getting, um, a lot of comments from my constituents. They, they of course think would like to see everything doubled. Um, if we ran a levy or did increase the, um, twenty-dollar transportation benefit fee that we have right now, what, say we doubled it to forty dollars. What percentage more sidewalk and paving do you think you could do with that? It would take, I'm guessing, a year before you saw any of the money.
Right, we would, we would need more staff for one. So part of that would be probably a staff. Or two, um. And then we would be able to run two separate crews. So we would almost be able to double some of the work. Um, based on what the material costs are. So with the concrete, that is one of my concerns is that when the shipyard starts, um, we may not be able to get concrete on our schedule. We might need to get concrete when the shipyard's not doing concrete. So.
Right.
I'm gonna have to work with those vendors to make sure that we can get our work done that I've committed getting done. Um, so it might mean that we're working more in the winter times. That's like we are right now. With the amount of work we have, I started in January, um, doing sidewalks and stuff.
Yeah, I've been watching all the work you've doing near fifteenth.
Um, because I, I want to commit, I, when I make a commitment to getting work done, I want to stand by those commitments.
So I want that any of the public who's watching too, to realize this is just the work that our crews are doing. It's got nothing to do with any capital projects that we might contract out.
Correct. Or any pothole patching or structural patches. Um, some structural patches could be very long, um, depending on the roadway. Um, we did a structural patch on National Avenue last year that was, um, it took a day for the staff to do, but it was a great benefit for, for the, for the public, so for the residents of the city. And there are a few that I have on schedule this year, um, that will benefit. Um, there's one over by the Naval Elementary School, um, where the road is pretty bad and, um, we can do a structural patch to help, um, the roadway there.
And now, this also doesn't include, like, if there's a, a water or sewer line failure that the crews have, the utility crews need to repair, then you would be paving in that, obviously, because it's the emergency does not show on this.
It does not, or any of the other utility work that we do.
Yeah.
Um, we have some, uh, work that we do for utilities or facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for water resources, um, all of the patching for the storm, so water taps, all of that. We have a very long list of work that, um, sometimes gets put to the side to meet the commitments that were made. Um, and I look for, you know, when it gets close to the end of the year of last year, I was looking to other sources to stay within budget.
Yeah. Now, the crews are doing a great job. I mean, the concrete work is better than anything we've contracted. They really are, are doing wonderful work. I really appreciate these, these plans have been a long time coming and I'm glad you got it together for us. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff? Yeah, no, just adding a thanks, thanks to Ron. We talked about this in Public Works, but just wanted to bring it to the whole council so that everyone can see what's going on in their district and the workers being spread across the city and just the, I let all the excellent work put in these plans into action. So, thank you.
Other comments?
Anna?
Um, okay, nothing from Denise, just making sure I'm deferring to Public Works. Very, very happy to see the sidewalks on Snyder Avenue. There will be great joy in Mudville about these sidewalks. My question to you is, um, you're doing both sides of, uh, what, fifteenth, ten to nineteenth?
That, that is my understanding.
Yeah.
We're doing at the intersection, um, about a hundred and thirty feet in to where the drains are, because there's some stormwater work that needs to happen. Um, and so I didn't want to put sidewalks in and then potentially have stormwater come through and have to redo some work.
Okay, so my question is, since you're only doing half of what's projected, which is it'll get up to twenty-fifth, um, is there any chance that you could do all of one side in twenty twenty-five? Instead of doing ones like Snyder, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm asking you questions one after another.
Nope. Um, so to answer your question there, um, the drains on both, there's drains on both sides of the road. So on one parts of that intersection, on the east side, we'll be going a little bit further to where the storm drain is. Then on the west side of fifteenth at Snyder. And we'll also be doing across the street, um, where the curb is the driveway approach, um, where it needs to be.
Yeah, I'm looking at fifteenth all the way up to nineteenth.
Right, and.
And you're talking about the little area near the cluster housing, the blue cluster housing by fifteenth?
That. That was.
That's like a few hundred feet.
Into three phases.
Okay.
Cause I was, I wanted to wait until the stormwater gets there, um, whatever their fixes are for that. So that way we're not going back and forth in there and having to redo and get the sidewalk.
So is the plan to go to nineteenth this year?
No.
So it's just showing it as going to nineteen?
It is for the color, um, when I had.
It's an attractive color.
When I had the, um, engineering staff helping, he only could do one color because it's a full segment of the road.
So will phase two be done next year?
Um, I can look and see.
I hope you guys are okay with.
It says twenty twenty-seven on the legend.
Okay, so it's, okay, just, uh.
I will work my hardest. It just depends on stormwater. If they are able to do it sooner. That's why I didn't fill the fifth year was so that way I could make movements and then down below, um, the, in the footnotes, I, I had put in there that more emergent projects, um, we can move up or down. Um, and so I know that that Snyder is, in fifteenth especially, was a, uh, main concern of getting that sidewalk done.
Well, yeah, and you guys have all heard this story before, so I'll just run through it really quickly. Last January, a woman driving over eighty miles per hour plowed through Gary Sullivan's, um, garage, first bounced off a tree that kept him, kept her from going into his living room, then went pushed smack through his garage, pushed the deep charkee in there, out through the other side. That's pretty awful, but you know, that was the third time that had happened. Speeds on Snyder are nuts. It's not a wealthy area. Um, if we can't get speed bumps and Chief McGanny says we can't get them because they'll slow people down, there's got to be some way to have a decent quality of life for people on Snyder Avenue. Even when I toured that area with planning, people were going, wow, I can really see why people would pick up speed. It's a nice flat thing, you know? No hills, no curves. Okay. I'm sorry to get passionate about my district, but, um, is there anything that I or anyone can possibly do to facilitate the stormwater so that maybe this could happen before twenty twenty-seven?
I believe that right now it's in, in with engineering. They were getting us a plan. We had hoped to do it last year.
Yes.
Intersection. And, um, they were, had not got done with the stuff, the speed stuff to see. We're putting bowl bouts and then. Or putting bulbouts and then shortening, sorting the crosswalk area. Across that Gary's house by where they, they went through the fence.
Right.
They were talking about moving that area out as well to kind of convince. That area to make it so speeds would be a little bit.
At fifteen.
Intersection in fifteen.
Okay, I would really like to take up council's time for another fifteen minutes on this, but I won't. Thank you. May I email you about this in the future? Thank.
So, Mr. Moore, my, my question is a conceptual question. So before the city got back into the business of installing sidewalks, the other process, I believe it's still on the BMC. Is for local improvement district. Built sidewalks. I know you're relatively new here, but has that happened?
I. I can check.
So the process would be people on the, in the, on that street decide, hey, I wanna. Build a sidewalk, one second, Jake. Maybe. My question would be, can you give me a back of the envelope figure? Cause I would assume that they would hire a private contractor to do this. It'd be the majority of the people on that block or whatever. There's a procedure in there. Can you give me a back of the envelope number as far as first? Per lineal foot, how much a sidewalk costs?
That is a great question. I haven't figured that out.
So maybe you can get back to me.
I can't get back.
Cause that is an avenue and maybe it's not a realistic avenue. Or maybe people are saying, well, the city's putting these sidewalks in. I'll just wait for a sidewalk there. Obviously, the problem is. The streets weren't ever built with sidewalks. New developments have to have sidewalks per city standards. It's just doing these other. At this rate, have you done a computation of? You identified all the streets that need sidewalks. How many years before all the streets that have been identified that need a sidewalk would? Get a sidewalk at the rate of you're going?
Richard Huddy said fifty years.
I, I, I think there might be a. I, I mean, and I'm not picking on you. You're doing a great job, but could, could you maybe kind of?
I can check.
Figure out what that would be?
I know that there's, there's three parts to the sidewalk program. There's what the streets does, and then there's the grant work, and then there's also what engineering. There's a whole list of ADA ramps. That are, you know, either noncompliant or missing in the city. I can fill a whole year with just doing. Nothing but ADA ramps.
Yeah.
And never, never see the end of the, of the list. So most of the, all of the work that is on here was grant work that I had. That I know that we have money for. And requests that have come in for trip hazards, trees. Or any other projects with like box egs. There were fifteen or fourteen ADA ramps that needed to be brought up to standard. Before the. And so that's why they got put on for this year. Because we're doing the paving this year.
I, trust me, I have empathy for you. It sounds like you're like a male. You'll, they'll never stop each day.
There's always work.
So, but, but I, I think. Hopefully, I'm not creating a lot of work. If it's something that you can do a back of envelopes, give me how many years it would take at your current rate. To put all the sidewalks. If you, you have identified throughout the city, what needs? As part of your sidewalk.
There are maps that engineering has that I can look at and we can figure out a plan.
Is the rest of the council interested in that number?
Yes. I, I talked to Ned about this at one point. They haven't done LIDs since the seventies.
Isn't that something?
So expensive they.
That's why I would like to know. And, and I assume they're done by private contractors, so it takes city resources. But, so if it's codified and it's an option.
Yep.
I think people need to know. Maybe they don't even realize that they could do this. So, yeah.
Well, and I know off the top of my head, we did last year for the CBD grant. We did twelve of the ADA ramps. And it was around a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So there. They have a little over ten thousand. A piece and concrete's two hundred and twenty dollars a yard.
But they're way cheaper. I mean, when we contract out an ADA ramp. It's more like thirty thousand that we're paying under contract. And it could be higher.
Understood, but that's also under the procedures that the city has to follow for pain. Navigations and all that stuff. Whereas if you got a contractor that does concrete work. Did I say the wrong? Mavis Beakins like the typing.
Typing school.
There you go. Davis Haven. There you go. Funny, I remember that. That was like thirty years ago. That'd be interesting enough. But I don't wanna create a whole bunch of work for you. This is something that's gonna take you days to do. Please don't do it. Thank you. Anna?
Just a, a really good question, like. I brought this up during budget. I think someone else did as well, that the six programmatic. Expenses on the, on the transportation improvement plan. Had, those figures were unaltered for at least the past four or five years. And, you know, persons have gone away to. So. How can we steal from Peter to pay Paul?
You know, on this idea of the improvement districts for sidewalks. I, I, I don't think what I'm about to say would actually work, but. I wonder if there's a way, like, kind of like, we've got pre-approved ADU plans, like, if we could have a really good set. I don't, I don't think we can do all the sidewalks in-house, the design, but maybe we could, or maybe we could fund the design of them. And then the neighborhood could take care of the funding and the construction. Maybe there's some way that we can help that. Throw that out.
A lot of the, a lot of those come out of the road standings back where it was done. So they're already pre-designed plans. And that's what, what we use for a lot of the work is just the free design plan through standard, road standards.
But you guys could help expedite the permit process, perhaps, if we had some type of program. If this was even feasible. A group of neighborhoods say, hey, we'd like to put sidewalk down our street. And then turn to public. Maybe help with the, the something we could do.
And there's more just putting the sidewalks in. It would be.
Yeah.
You know, being in the right of way, the drainage. The, you know, driveway approaches and things like that, mailboxes. There's all these other considerations that are. We have to take into consideration rather than, you know, just going out and laying down the forms and pouring the sidewalk. There's a lot of different.
Oh, interesting, but if, if just one homeowner wanted to put a sidewalk in their, on their front edge, they could do it.
Yeah.
Without going through all what you just described. I believe.
It would depend where they're at and, you know, if they had to put in curb and gutter and. Then sidewalk or just put sidewalk in depending upon. Where their drainage is.
Yeah.
There's no latitude for like an asphalt walkway. Everything has to meet. The full sidewalk standard.
That's what my understanding is because of the ADA laws. They're pretty strict. And when I worked. When I worked on the outside, doing ADA laws. When we were trying to get, to meet the standards, we just decided as a. As a business that we should, they should be in concrete because concrete's more true than. Asphalt because it could compress and be compacted too much and then you lose some of your. Your crosswalks.
I built a lot of them in Seattle and we just used steel forms and we put in a lot of asphalt walkways. And it is ADA compliant, but you don't wanna just send. Out somebody without. Real experience doing that because there's a lot of work. I mean, they have to put the rock down, have it well compacted. It's not a. And you're. Homeowner project.
And you're tied up.
But, okay, I mean, they can be done cheaper, but they also only last maybe twenty years versus a hundred years for concrete.
Well, I, I think with our monster trucks roaring around, that our sidewalks. Like the crosswalk that you, that you guys put in on, on Calo is already being chipped at.
I believe Jennifer wanted to.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Don't worry.
These are like, I'm really happy to see this. This has been, you know, a long time coming, so thank you for coming together for us. I know we've been talking about it for. As long as I've been on council, so. I wanted to just make sure that I understood a couple of things. It looks like. For chip sealing.
Yep.
Chip seal plan, we've got different regions there. And I wanted to kind of check in. I know we're gonna have a lot of things happening downtown. In twenty twenty-six during the summertime. So I see that. A lot of the chip sealing and so on is deferred to twenty-eight. I mean, and I'm sure that probably wasn't the reason. When you put the plan together, I didn't know anything about the FICA.
I did.
You did, okay. So are we, so then it doesn't seem like there's gonna be any major kind of. Construction of sidewalks happening. During that time, am I, am I correct in assuming that I'm just kind of. Yeah, sidewalks specifically.
In the downtown area? Just, no, I don't see there's not as of right now.
Okay. So, and, and I know we're all one team. We're all here for Team City of Birmingham and also. Our utility district customers, apparently. You mind about that? But I, you know. I wanted to check in and find out about sidewalk repairs, expansions. For District One. And, and basically that goes between Sylvan. And Tracyton. I, I like to say between Lions Park and Blueberry Park. So can you help me out with understanding? What improvements are gonna be made in, in, in my? For my neighbors, for my constituents. And that's Warren Avenue, I'm sorry, Wheaton Way, all the way towards. So like that, basically that chunk.
There is, we have a repair next year over on Wheaton Way in front of the Sun Eleven. Where there's a trip hazard.
That's, that's close. You know, that's District Two, it's okay. Yeah.
When I did this, this was based off of the grants that we already secured for next year. Knowing which, which one we were, we were going after. And then I wanted to throw in some. Of the customer. Request of, for a tree.
Okay.
So I just kind of put them on there to get our footage. Of the fifteen hundred that we were, that we were promising that we could do for twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And we're at seventeen sixty. Now that doesn't mean that something might pop up in more district that. Might be a little bit more emergent than one of these other repairs where we would go and. Do, do that.
Sure. The only work I see in my district is chip sealing in twenty twenty-nine. We're last on the list. Pardon me. I just still wanna kind of make sure that we.
And that was.
Just keep some attention around Blueberry Park, around. Arm and Jar Elementary, access to the park, to the school, Uptown Road. I know it's not part of the five-year plan, and Ned's not here, darn it. There was at one point in time we were gonna walk that route, but then they suggested Google Map instead. Instead of walking, but. I, I, and then I was told that there could be some kind of. Reprioritization and like a new rubric or, and so I just kind of wanted to find out. I guess I'll just connect on a personal basis, but I, I don't see anything in my district really until twenty twenty-nine. As far as improvements on sidewalks. We are pretty lucky that a lot of areas do have good sidewalks, so I'll, I'll definitely. Honor that fact.
Did Pine Road work out well?
Oh, we didn't go, tell them to walk. You know, but, no, well, Google Images are not exactly up to date. So I, I don't think that I made that appointment. That is my shortfall. If I can make that.
Just so.
I'm gonna follow up on that.
Okay, are we, are we done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Ms.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
All right, does this council need a break?
Yes.
Get to general council business. It's six forty-six, we'll return at six fifty-six.
Very good to us, Eric.
Very good to us, Eric.
I think I'll check that.
Okay, we're back live. Now we're getting to.
Okay.
General council business. The first item of the order is in your packet under C one. If you want the printout, Christine was nice enough to print out.
Can I get a printout?
Let's go ahead and do this then. And really, this is one of those deals where if you want to sign this, hopefully you get a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for us to take a vote, but on the last page of this item for P E C, and this talks about uh, signing on as an elected official. On the very last page, they warn, uh, elected, uh, local officials that if your whole legislative body votes on this, this might be a form or whatever. So I talked to council, I say, you know what? I want to present this tonight. You guys vote however you want. Um, but now we've met the requirement of open. It was real gray area. If you vote on your own without talking to anyone else, I don't believe it's required, but I just thought, hey, whatever. So, of course, we all know there was a press conference earlier this week. Mayor Wheeler was there, you know, watched it on T B W. I actually saw a little bit on T B W. Where the governor announced that, I think, this summer, we're gonna be on two-vote service, so that's great. But this letter is a little more comprehensive. I'll let you look at it at your own leisure. And Christine, after this meeting, is gonna resend the email with the link on it, so you can click on that link, and then you can actually digitally sign as an individual council member. So you're welcome to do that. I did mention that this is open to public comment, so at this point, does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I don't really see anybody of the public here. And so with that, uh, let's go on. And before we go to item C two, I believe we have, and I'm gonna be terrible with the title, our community outreach managers. Could you come up and introduce yourself, please? And I'm sorry, I wasn't part of the hiring process, so I don't even know your name. Could you come, have a seat?
Please have a seat.
And welcome, by the way.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm President Yonker and other council members. I'm excited to be here. I am Janice Briggs and I have the pleasure to serve as the Diversity and Community Engagement Manager. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, engaging with all stakeholders, internal, internal in my colleagues and then in the community, you know, so and field. Council members that outside of, um, work, there are several causes that I'm passionate about, whether it's, um, you know, food insecurity and kind of health in or domestic abuse and violence. Um, um, these are just some clauses that are really near and dear to my heart. Um, also, members of our community who are re-entering our community after being in perseverated power, they being, um, transitioning, um, are they, do they have hurdles that, you know, are they accessing city services or not? So there are just so many things I'm really passionate about and just coming in with a collaborative mindset to listen, um, and learn and then find out how I can serve alongside my colleagues, um, to advance the goals and priorities of city as well as the overall, um, priorities for the, for the city of Birmingham and ensuring that our residents, friends, whether they're unsheltered or not, they're not just living, but they're also thriving. And so they have the tools and the resources to be successful.
Great. And I put you on the spot. I just saw you out there. You're not on the agenda. But I'm gonna open it up to the council if they want to just briefly, uh, ask you any particular question or say, welcome, welcome aboard. So I want to say on behalf of council, welcome. I'm glad to see you here.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions or comments? No, I'd go ahead, Jane.
Well, everything that you touched on, there are people working in the community on it, so I, I'd be happy to send you an email and give you a list of some people who are already working on some of those. And I think everybody on the council knows different people who are working on those issues.
Yeah, so tapping into the diversity and resources of my colleagues, already said, um, contacts as well and, um, council member connecting with those. So again, not reinventing the wheel, but just working to get it further back.
Hey, great. I'm, I'm really happy you're here.
I'm excited.
Anna?
I'm deferring to, to Denise who's already.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Denise. I'm terrible at that. Go ahead. Nat, we can't hear you. You're on mute.
Uh, I'm really sorry I'm not there tonight. I was really looking forward to meeting you, but there will be other times. So welcome. Uh, we've needed you. Uh, so glad that you're here.
Thank you, member, right.
Okay, go ahead, Anna.
Just, I'm so glad that you are passionate about these things. This is a, a somewhat passionate council, so it's, uh, I, I will.
Whiz tip.
I will send you an email as well and be really happy to be of use to you.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much.
Just real brief.
Sure, Jennifer.
Welcome. Uh, I think that's something that impressed us during your interview was, um, this broad view of what diversity looks like and how to reach out to the community. And not only that, but the professionalism which you came to us with. And, um, I just, uh, and, and, and the charm that she brought. Let me tell you, she's gonna charm the pants off of everybody. I'm tell, I'm telling you, she's, uh, she's wonderful and, uh, we're glad that, um, after everything that you're here and secured and with us today.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Ken, for letting me put you on the spot.
Okay, absolutely.
Next, we're gonna go up to item C two, which is an update on council goal number three. I, I, I chronically vacant building policy development. Council member, good now. So, um, I've been, uh, working with some legal staff on this. I, I don't really have, like, the full thing. I think we are trying to get our head around it, try to see what other communities are doing. Um, and one of the things that seems to be maybe a little more foundational is, is, is literally coming up with some sort of inventory or some sort of, you know, uh, database or something that's gonna start tracking it. So, um, I, like I said, I don't really have a lot on that. You know, we're trying to figure out, like, you know, what we, what can we do? What kind of stick can we wave? Or is there any kind of incentive that could be created? Or, you know, if, if there's fines, could we designate them to also fixing up stuff? But if anybody has any, any, um, you know, thoughts or input on this. So you're researching what other cities? Yeah, we're looking at other, other cities' ordinance, um, and just trying to look. Some, some of it's looking at ordinances. Some of it's been reading articles about what some other cities have done successfully. You know, some of them have funded things that help, and that's not, not on the table for us, uh, in the foreseeable future, but.
What information are you seeking?
Um, uh, just, just if anybody has thoughts like, uh, you know, I, I always have like a, like a hard time when I, when I think about, like, who are we to tell somebody what they can do with their property, right? Like, it's my property. But then I, the way I kind of resolve that is, well, your property has value. You chose to be here because of what we've created as a community, right, that in the, in the city. So, you know, there's, you, you gotta kind of be a part of it. So I, I do feel it's within our purview to be able to say, like, you, you gotta do something with this, you know, uh, whether it's, you know, maintaining some, you know, uh, minimum standards. But see, you know, somebody who's just, you know, letting something go, I just, it's funny, I was just uh, by my house on the sixth and Naval, there's the gas station. It's been empty twenty, more than, you know, twenty, maybe twenty-two years, just nothing. Like, and I know there was some EPA Brown field stuff, but I think it's been remedied, like, what, what, you know? And then I actually really just had a constituency, actually, and not my constituent, just somebody who approached me and said, like, what can we do about, like, you know, they tore the Eagles down. They tore that Affirmant building down, and so I'll just sit in there, like, and I, that, that at least is some progress, but. So I think we have to just figure out what we want to go after. Then, then some of it to me, like, could be back to legal and say, like, all right, well, if we put, if we enact some sort of rule, when is that going to affect? Like, do we have to wait till it's sat for ten more years before we can take action? Clearly, we're not gonna put a rule in to effect and then the next day go. You know, so we have to figure out that, like, what's a reasonable amount of time for somebody to, to react? So. Good. Yeah, actually Jeff on that, Jane.
Yeah, no, I know. We talked a bit, say it out loud, like, state constitution prohibits us from doing the vacancy tax, but
Right.
some cities, I believe, have done vacancy fines, same way with other, other coding enforcement fines. You have a negative effect on the city, extra city services. Um, but yes, good examples. I know I've had a few people come to me to volunteer to say they do that research and I haven't quite seen it yet, so appreciate you sharing it for.
You know, like, I just saw another building downtown that's, you know, the windows are now boarded up. I would, you know. Jane and then Jennifer.
So anecdotally, I have heard that because, um, we require sprinkler systems that a lot of the, the owners of vacant buildings, especially downtown, don't want to put that investment in. But I'm thinking with technology, maybe they don't have to get a four-inch water main anymore to, to have, to sprinkle a building. So maybe it's, um, looking at options and collecting options for them to say, hey, you might not have to do this. You're gonna have to obviously make it a safe building. And I'm not saying to get rid of the sprinkler ordinance. I'm just saying maybe we can help them find different ways.
I believe that's just, we just adopted international fire code anyways.
Or point out new technology. That's what I mean.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point.
So, and what I really see as a fluid part of what we're trying to do is we also need to do an assessment, right? Like, we don't just want to find people because then they're just going to hate the government even more or whatever. So what about um, like a survey of needs and uh, you know, why is this, why are you keeping this building vacant? I mean, we assume, oh, it's for the tax write-off, but maybe it's for a reason like you highlighted there. So I would love to see this like as a layered approach. Like we really, as soon as possible, would need to get a survey out to these. I don't know how to identify them after you've figured out how to identify them. A survey out to people like, what do you need? You know, because I think technical assistance is something we could provide in a lot of cases. I mean, I'm sure if, if people, uh, you know, knew that they could go to the city for questions or, or, a, a, and if that's just my opinion, um.
We could drive by and see if the lights are over.
Lights are on at night. And you know, I mean, and, and I don't know if there's even services to some of these buildings, right? You know, like they may not even have water service or anything. So.
Yeah. Good. So you're working on that. I think my understanding you're working with uh, on the header. Go ahead, Anna.
So you, you were trying to amass the database of vacant property, of chronically vacant property.
I think where we're going.
Okay.
Amass sounds like a really big list, but yeah.
Okay. Uh, you're trying to a little, uh, okay. So you've already done like super obvious things like kids have county parcel search, right?
No, we're not, we're not looking at specific. We're, we're, we're much higher level right now. We're conceptually like, what do we have to do? To what, you know, what can we do? You know, what's, what's legal? What are the options? What are, what are best practices? What are other communities doing? But then part of that seems to be like, okay, well, we need to maybe start some sort of list and and then once we've looked at, and then we just say like, we're going to focus on the downtown core, maybe in light of next year, you know, I, again, I don't know how fast any of this could actually move, but, but then maybe we look at just during some outreach, you know, this you know, we could be talking about here could almost be a full-time position, like
Right.
until everything's solved. But uh, then it'd be out of work.
But the fire department should already have that list, at least of downtown.
That's a good point. That's, that's a good point.
And the DVA has part of it.
Yeah, yeah, they do have occupancy.
And you've already talked to legal about what, what you, like, are there any allowable uses of buildings that are not up to fire code? Like, can they be pop-ups or anything?
Yeah. So that would be um, conversations with WDCP to figure out what could be permitted temporarily. We've talked about that a little bit uh, in the past. So um, you know, it's interesting to like, I, you know, know some property owners downtown and, you know, they yeah, they don't, they don't want to spend the money or they, they, they expect a tenant to move in and pay for all the upgrades themselves or do all the work themselves. It's unreal, it's really unrealistic. And, you know, so you own this big piece of property and you will never have the resources to develop it. I don't, you know, I don't know if it's just some sort of retirement plan or something, but is there anything we can do to make, incentivize uh, somebody to develop or pass it on or something?
Well, I think this is great. Um, is there anything that we specifically can do to help you?
Yeah, just like if you do come across anything, you have any thoughts, shoot them our way. We can kind of in info gathering and hoping to.
Is that you and Kylie?
Um, yeah, and well, John, I
Picklin.
Picklin. Picklin is um, uh, kind of working with me on this. So, uh, yeah.
He's a smart young guy.
Good, agreed.
All right. Thanks for the update on that, Michael. And you'll have the next item, Public Safety Committee Briefing.
Oh, yeah. Um, so we had a, we had a very quick meeting and um, um, so we didn't touch a little bit on uh, inspired by last uh, meeting, we did have a little talk about uh, skateboarding, just the fact that we were going to be talking about it and uh, looking into.
Abolish it.
Excuse me, what?
And to abolish the law.
Yeah, well, I don't know about that. So, but uh, so uh, we talked about that. There, there was, I don't think. Can you remember? I haven't seen the man.
We were unanimous against it.
Against removing it?
Yes.
Yeah, but this was just the beginning of the conversation. So.
You're unanimous against modifying the ordinance?
Yes.
Pretty much. Uh, yeah.
Yes, we were.
Michael's got the floor. Um, I, I can give you guys a little information on that if you would like, but
Yeah.
You know.
So we can tell our people.
There are. Well, I, well.
Two of them.
There's nothing that, that we talked about, uh, public safety that I didn't talk about after the meeting Wednesday night with those folks. But I mean, there has been really destructive behavior to the city this past year from skateboarders. Uh, right out, right in front of our businesses. Um, the skateboard shop, somebody walked out with a salt ball, cut the armrests off of a rotary donated bench that was designated to be moved to Calo, cut the armrests off so they could then go across the front of it with their.
At the skateboard shop?
You look at the front of the museum, you'll see all these spots where there's all these marks on the building where they go up, hit the wall and come down. The museum has planters. One of the planters had the little nuggets so that you couldn't do the skateboard thing. They've removed those and they, and they've been skateboarding on it. Um, I've witnessed during, um, like, I think it was a first Friday, skateboarders in the street lost control of their skateboard, zoomed out, went across the sidewalk, hit the building and ricocheted back. And when I've tried to ask, you know, nicely for folks to do stuff, they're just awful attitude or the skateboard shop says they don't know those people or have no control of that. So it's, it's just really kind of disrespectful. So now we're putting in millions of dollars to that area with all brand new infrastructure and things like that. And if, you know, but also it was brought up, which I didn't even know that we have a skateboard park, which is
Oh, yeah.
Park's still here. You know, if you go to our website and you go to East Park, it is the saddest example of, of what we have for a park. And I don't know if the parks page has something different, but it literally just shows a plot of green grass. That's like the whole exciting photo of the.
Wait a minute, is this state park in Denise's district? Is that right?
I don't know where you guys live, but it's, it's.
And on that one.
It is in my district, I am proud to say.
Eight park, yeah, in district two, just checking. Thank you.
It's the bottom of a very long district. Yes.
But if you're traveling by skateboard, it won't take you long to get there.
What the hell?
Probably more than ten minutes.
Anyways. So I guess if, if we were going to, so
Thank you for the.
The only restriction on skateboarding is in the downtown core, which is very pedestrian heavy, which, you know, reasons that it sort of still makes sense in the park assets that we have, one of the parks, things like that. And I, I mean, I could see us reducing it. Okay. So then, okay, that, that's, that's kind of the skateboard recreational use. Then there's also, like, we're not trying to punish somebody who wants to like get to the ferry in the morning on a longboard or something like that. So there's like sort of a commuter aspect of scooters and, and that kind of stuff. And we kind of thought, well, maybe that might live better in the um, uh, uh.
Bike lanes.
Or, but multimodal, the, the.
Multimodal pathways.
Yeah, or, you know, anyways, it might, it might be a little, there may be a way that the two things kind of exist, like you can't recreationally do stuff um, on these assets. So can I call in Jane?
So yeah, that's my main concern. I want to make sure that they can ride, use them for transportation. But I think if we, if we can convince public works to put the, the um plastic tea sticks along all of our um, bike lanes, then that would make it safer for everybody. I mean, somebody might pop off of it, but that's more of a recreational thing. And I, you know, I wasn't aware of the damage that they were doing downtown. And I, I agree that it shouldn't be recreational on the city streets.
Janice, that's.
Downtown.
I mean, sorry.
Anna?
So.
Your name is.
That was very nice of you.
Um, my objection was that so many of our sidewalks are not beautiful, wide suburban sidewalks. And I'm sorry, Jennifer, I cited like Bo Avenue, like.
But you can, it's some pretty cherry looking sidewalk.
It's some gorgeous sidewalk.
It is. Um, you can quote that all you want.
But I have seen, like, I've been driving down Eleventh and I've seen kid, well, I've seen people, everybody's a kid to me now. Uh, it's skateboarding uh, along Eleventh and just like hitting a, a bomb on that sidewalk where it's not perfectly level and flipping out into the street lane. That's not, I don't want to see that. Um, it was really lucky that they were in front of me who was, you know, insane about the speed limit. What if it had been somebody bombing along in a Ford three thirty?
Yeah, so definitely, Jennifer, but I want to say one thing too is, you know, this idea that like because we don't enforce it doesn't mean
Right.
that it should be taken off, it should be taken off the books. Like, I, I brought up, I think, uh, like public nudity in Seattle. Like, it's not illegal to be nude in Seattle. Like, they do the Fremont parade and things like that. What's a, but if somebody complains, if it, you know, bothers somebody enough to complain, well, then they'll take action. So, you know, it, 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 there's lots of reasons why that, you know, things are illegal that we're not, we're not in such a police state that someone's going to be standing there to do it. But, you know, but now if you're skateboarding in the wrong spot and your skateboard goes through a store window and you hurt somebody or things like that, well, then you're in trouble for all the things, you know, and so.
Well, so, so after the last council meeting, I dove into some other cities examples and I sent to the Public Safety Committee. I don't know if you got those or Denise is shaking her head. Okay. Uh, so what? One with PL up and the other was um, Pacific Washington and they both seemed to try and balance and make it clear that it's okay as in water transportation, but that like a bicyclist or pedestrian, that you can't damage, you know, public property and X, Y, and Z. So those two were kind of more recent ones that came up that seemed to do a nice job balancing, try to address the concerns, but still making it clear, yeah, don't go to the store to venture.
Yeah. And but, and I also don't think that anybody who's trying to commute on one is getting any kind of harassment or flack from us. So
too good example to consider. That would, yeah, update ours to be a bit more modern.
I think it, it doesn't sound unfamiliar. I had a, had a bad sinus thing that I think I finally shook in, so.
I really appreciate the point. Um, so thank you for giving me that information. And um, are you prepared to present on this at a council meeting at all?
No, I think we need to get something tangible. This is. Yeah.
Okay. Um, quick question for, I mean bicyclists. Anybody on a multimodal, you know, alternative form of transportation, there's helmet requirements, right? Are there?
Hmm.
For children, I believe there are on bicyclists.
Okay, so adults are not required to wear.
Don't believe some states.
Thank you. I haven't delved into it. I'm sure you did. So, okay, thank you. That's it.
I was gonna say, the PUL code, I really liked because it also addressed like motorized scooters and other things. And yeah, it was much more comprehensive.
And, but is that there? I'm just going to look for that right now.
Yeah, all good.
Is that there? Um, um, is that a, oh, it is a skateboarding ordinance. Okay.
You know, and I have a separate point that's kind of related and also not related. It's, it's applicable. But Council Coughlin here is, we're talking about, we need to have some kind of policy for the bike and scooter rentals. And I just kind of brought that back up in my mind. If we're addressing it, this might be an appropriate time to address it.
I really like the.
Especially with next summer coming. Um, I just imagine that some of those services might be, could possibly be coming to the downtown core.
Yeah, I do have it.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Me too.
Is that it, Michael?
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, regional other committee board briefings. Anybody want to talk about anything?
Well, basically, Michael and I were at a um, so just from downtown Bremerton Association has started a kind of team Bremerton uh, monthly meeting. And the, the main idea was to get all the different um, I'd say tourism and commerce folks around the county to Bremerton and say, hey, what are you doing for Bremerton? Really, really cool. Uh, this past one was more focused on, on FIFA, just seeing what preps are going to be done for that. And so like Commissioner Walters was there. And I, I think, Michael, it's fair to say that the, the discussion is there's still a lot of unknowns as to what exactly the city has committed to. Michael had a great question on like, has the city signed anything? What are we signed up for? What's the scope of work? We talked a little bit about um, in terms of that planning, you know, thinking about uh, there was discussions on, is it possible to, for some of the empty buildings to occupy temporarily for a month? What about all the extra hot dog vendors? We have some codes in the books, but one needs to be updated, right? Like mobile, mobile vendors, transportation, all the ones that have to go into it. So.
Permitting for mobile vendors.
Right, yeah.
It's pretty expensive.
Permitting.
Just to let you know.
Everything, yeah.
There's a, a pretty high daily fee and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, no, that's good.
Just basically. Talk about the security.
Yeah, yeah, I brought that up. I know. So I'm sure the discussion's hopefully happening citywide. I don't know, mayor's not here, but wanted to, I was kind of make council aware of that. And I think just a lot of unknowns right now, but fifteen months will fly by before that hits us.
Are they known unknowns?
There are known unknowns and unknown unknowns.
Things Denise's got to handle.
Yeah, I, uh, FIFA has really been the topic of conversation around the community. Everybody's getting really excited about it. And then I got the mayor's uh, email this afternoon, uh, kind of talking about some of what the city is going to do to help. Um, I think uh, we really need to find out what the city is going to be doing. It's coming up and uh, I'm just reminded of, you know, with Quincy Square. Um, you know, we got a last minute application from the city for the operation of Quincy Square uh, on the LTAC and Lodging Tax Committee. And uh, you know, this uh, Bremerton has a lot to uh, gain, maybe. And um, I just want to make sure that city services uh, uh, that are being committed, you know, are um appropriate. And I don't know, Council President, where do we get involved in any of that or do we? Um, I, I just don't know what the plan is. And quite frankly, from what I hear, there's not really a plan.
I, I would think that maybe that's uh, Public Works Committee would be the one to address on the Quincy Square or, or do they turn the keys over, so to speak, once it's all completed?
We don't know.
Uh, it could be parks, Mr. Barker. I don't know. Has that been worked out to your knowledge?
I think the mayor's had some meetings with different people to try to figure out.
Yeah, there's been a few meetings and I'm not going to throw
Sure.
somebody else up that I haven't been in meetings. I, it's not my understanding at this time that parks would manage. We may be involved as we are downtown with garbage can, flowers and types of things, but I think there's been discussions regarding that though.
Yeah, but as far as.
That might be a good question.
It's like six weeks worth of activities, uh, I think.
Operational maintenance, I, obviously that's under the purview of the mayor, you know, so.
I, I would, would just say that the stage of the planning that we're at is where we're at. Like, it's the, we're just at the very, very beginning plan of this. Um, my understanding is there may be some documents coming from FIFA that might require NDA, you know, to even see them. And uh, so, you know, but I, I know folks have already reached out to other uh, communities that have hosted in the past and things like that. So there's, yeah.
But Denise, anything else?
Uh, no, my concern remains the same. It's, it's uh, very uh, it's going to be very rushed. So, anyway.
Thank you. Okay. Anything for the good of the order? Jennifer first?
No, regional, regional.
Oh, you got a regional. Kids have transit.
I think, yes, kids have transit. Um, skipping right over all the hundreds of thousands we're spending on ferries and parking rides. Um, during good of the order, I could have transit. I, I mentioned that our mission statement, that the kids have transit mission statement is to uh, provide a commuter, uh, you know, to provide for commuters and also to um, for those who want a consciously green alternative. And I found that very odd since I had been thinking all this time that the goal was to create, you know, public transportation, a network that people would use instead of cars, especially considering how we're getting rid of parking requirements. And so um, Christine Roffus uh, put, had that put on the agenda for a future study session of kids have transit. And as always, I'm just checking in with you guys to make sure that a network of public transportation, at least in that planned density of Bremerton is something that we all support or most of us support.
I support.
Yeah. Go, Michael.
Oh, I, well, I, I think uh, uh, an understanding. I, well, I, I think, uh, uh, an understanding consequence of FIFA. Might be something like getting a circulator bus running next summer or in things like that.
They've got all kinds of buses that they're not surplusing because they're keeping them for FIFA.
Right, so, but if we can, a little proof of concept, so, yeah.
I will, I will slide that in there.
So what, what you said, mission?
Mission statement is, is that we, uh, is that Kitsaps Transit, uh, provides commuter service. And a sustain, I think it's sustainably green. You're looking at it, aren't you?
Yeah, cause I, just check on it. So go to the website about us and it says, our mission. Provide safe, reliable and efficient transportation choices that enhance the quality of life.
Look right above it. That's the.
Okay, it's, it's, uh, it's like an about us on the top of the page with another mission statement. Uh.
Yeah.
We pride ourselves on providing reliable service to Kitsap County's commuter base and a sustainable green travel app from our finally conscious. Whether you're catching a bus for work, taking a scenic ferry trip, yada, yada, yada. Okay.
Yeah, about us.
So that's, yeah, that's just a little.
And still, it's like, anyhow, so the, the Kitsap Transit Board is sufficiently galvanized that they. Or it's going to be on a study session. So I just wanted to check in with you guys.
To update the.
Well, to make sure that we're working on our mission. Um, it's, i- if, if Kitsap Transit is only to, to, to serve commuters. And we're never going to get buses that will get people to their doctors, get people to their grandmas, get people to the grocery store. Um, then so be it. It's just, let's, let's be clear about what we're doing. Um, yeah. Okay, so that's it. I've checked in with you guys.
Good. Okay, generally good of the order. We got Jennifer and then Attorney.
Okay, um, and I do apologize if I am behind on this. Uh, we have, I have a question about a lot. Um, so, um, about, uh, where Bay Bowl was. We have, there's a permit that's going to prove for some apartments. I wondered if we, is there any way to get a briefing on it? Have we talked about this at all? It's just a huge project and it's interesting. Then I just wanted to know. Uh, what, it's a, it's a Mark Goldberg property. Is he the one? I'd really like to know more about this. I saw it on Facebook. At a group called Western Washington History and it says, it showed the demolition of Bay Bowl. It said permits have been approved. For future Bay Bowl apartments east Bremerton. And there's a rendering. I just wondered if.
We don't, we don't, I'm having to send you the permit. The permit is approved and waiting to be paid for in the last year. Okay. Getting a permit from a P proved to issue is them buying the permit. So we're waiting for them to do that. And so I can send you a copy.
Okay.
If that's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
We don't usually do briefings.
No, no, that's fair.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't. So I'm just looking at you. What, what is it that you need from us?
Is this a mark, is this still Mark Goldberg?
He has worked on that project. I don't know if he will carry it over the same.
Okay, so it's a permit that's not yet paid for. The permit is not a.
It is approved. We've done all of our work. It's sitting here just waiting to be picked up.
How long do they have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with this and, uh, Mark Goldberg, yeah, has a long history of. Developing to a certain point of project and that's one of them. Um, so I don't think there's been any movement really, uh, on it recently. Director Spencer, I don't, I don't think there has been any recent. Uh, news about it, except maybe on social media.
And, and here's what I can say. Oftentimes permits get through the approval status and then they sit here until they get financing. And once the project gets financing, they pay for the last bit of the permit fee and they pick their permits up and go. They basically sit in our shop. In a holding pattern, I would call it kind of a bullpen, waiting for that step of financing. Financing has been very much a challenge of trying to make projects work in this, this full gamut from residential remodels. People are having challenges all the way up to these two projects. And so to answer, uh, Jane's question about how long do they have? We typically give them a long time to come and pick them up because they have had so many financing challenges. And we've been doing that not for just one person. We do that across the board for everybody when they face these kind of challenges.
But as codes change, like let's say something got approved in twenty twenty-three. There's forever.
Their grandfather didn't want to approve. Uh-oh.
To a point, I mean, they're going to sit there for five years in this status. We don't go there, but it has been the standard practice that in its. Six months past the, the expiration date, we extend them. That's what we've always done.
Um, and I just bring it up because I just thought about when we were talking about vacant buildings. It also made me think about vacant lots. Um, and so I just wanted to bring that up and, and I don't know how familiar you are Denise with it. And so I could have asked you first. It's just something I saw here and I was going to chat with you, um, in person about it. But, um, I wanted to bring it up here and just find out a little more. It's an interesting looking rendering, so.
Well, it's been, the rendering has been completed. I, I'd say for what, almost a year now. He's trying to sell the project, you know, I think. Um, and, and that's what he does. Is he, uh, you know, creates all these plans and then tries to sell the project as planned instead of just the land. Um, I did hear though, uh, 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 something that's connected to that as C H I has put up all its. Eight, eight different parcels up for sale around Bremerton and, um, I was told that they're in a ninety day, uh, uh. Due diligence kind of, uh, process right now. So, yeah, Harrison Heights should be on its way fairly soon. To some redevelopment, cross our fingers.
And so this being on, um. Cliffside, I mean, I think that was of interest to me as well. And just for us to keep on our radar if the project does come to fruition because these cliffside projects with erosion, et cetera. And all the things that happen. I, I just, I would just love for us to keep this on our radar, you know.
And they have geotechnical engineers.
Yes, of course.
So we have reports that we have inspections that are required.
I feel more confident about new construction than old, older, older projects, right? Okay. Thank you very much. That's all. Thank you for the time for that good of the order.
I understand that this one's been in the works for a while, but if this one came through now, would it have an information sign up in front of it?
It would, yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, there was no information sign. So if anybody wants to see it.
Send an email.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, please.
Thank you so much.
I'm so sorry.
Anna, go ahead.
Okay, I have one short thing for Good Of The Order, which is, um. I'm going to start working on this for myself and, and I think that. Our, as a council, we could get better at being direct with each other, um, and still preserve respect and decorum. Um. I, like, I disagree philosophically with, um, Eric's decision to, to not pass on the information about the D E I. That was, this was weeks ago. And, but instead of coming out and saying that, I just like shut up and, and, and didn't speak. So that's all. I'm just going to try to work on that. The same thing. With the, uh, the two different people that we approved for plant, for different commissions. It's like, there's got to be a way to just say directly, um, someone with planning experience would be a good fit for the planning commission. Um, and, and like, is, is there a way that we can have input on this? I, I know I'm saying this very poorly. I just don't want this council, of which I'm very extremely fond. And full of respect and admiration to get into a thing about personalities. So that's, that's really all I have. And I, I don't think I could have said that much worse, but there it is. It's over.
No worries. And I don't want to dig up, um. What occurred or what did not occur, but I did not hold back on the council on holding up the, I don't want to get into it, but that's true.
Okay, sorry.
Kylie, go ahead.
I, this is sort of a good of an order, but also just, um, some of you have seen the mayor's initiatives. There's a mention of reorganizing human resources to have a director position that reports directly to the mayor. Um, I want the ability to explore that with Public Safety Legal Committee. I don't really have a committee necessarily for some stuff. But we take, um, risk management stuff, we take sometimes legal stuff to that committee. And I just wanted to make sure everyone was on board with that before it shows up and feel invited or something.
Would Charlotte get that pay bump?
I know.
Would she get that pay bump before she retires?
That, yeah, no, this would be a reorganization after that. So I'm just asking about the committee if we can talk about it.
As long as it's not on Public Works, yeah.
No, not on Public Works. And I already talked to Michael about it and didn't have a problem, but I just wanted, since it's not technically a public safety issue. I didn't want it to seem, um, out of sorts with, um. You know, the places.
Yeah, I think that's fine. See, see, completely closed.
Great. Anything else for the good of the order?
I have our executive session.
All right, now we're going to go to executive session.
Oh, Denise, is it okay if we call you?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll now meet for ten minutes to discuss pending a potential litigation as allowed on your R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero. Front these one, front these I, and no action is anticipated. The record is seven forty-two, so we'll now go in an executive session. All those people that need to be here. She stopped the clip. Yeah, one second.